Okay. We'll call the meeting to order. And do we have a motion to adopt the agenda?
I'll move adopt the agendas for tonight.
Is there a second?
All second.
Okay. And do we need any discussion on that? Okay, so all in favor say aye.
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 And opposed? That passes. And on to the approval of minutes from the April twenty-third meeting. Anybody have any comments?
I will abstain from voting on this as I was not present.
Anyone else?
Um.
Go ahead, Ryan.
I found a few misspellings.
Okay. Go ahead.
Um, page one. What would that be, twenty-five? Line twenty-five. Uh, my last name has been misspelled. Twice.
Alrighty. That is so noted. Anything else, Ryan?
Um, yeah, page two. I'm sorry, the first digit was cut off, so I'm guessing on this. Uh, just below the center, paragraph starting with Berg noted the consideration. There's an open parentheses, but there isn't a closed parenthesis.
Okay.
That was line seventy-two.
Yeah. So it starts in seventy-three and since seventy-five. So are we just gonna put a parentheses at the end of seventy-five?
Yeah, I think that would fit.
Okay. Any others?
Uh, line eighty-five, Berg said paving requirements for driveways in all residential zoning districts. I believe it should be have been in East Bethel City Code since two thousand eight instead of has been.
Okay.
That's all I found.
Okay, thank you. I don't have any corrections, but I do have some comments. You know, I know that these minutes are very much of a summary, but I think that there was a lot that that wasn't included in the reasoning of why we came to the decision, the discussion that we did. In fact, Corey had a lot of really good comments about why these aprons are important, and I just don't see them reflected in the minutes. Would you agree, Corey?
Yes, well, they covered it a little. I think they covered it.
Okay. Well, if you're satisfied, but I just thought, again, I know this is-
I mean, go back to line one-twenty. It talks about one.
We just had a lot of discussion about what these aprons do from preventing rocks coming onto the roads and things like that, yeah. So, it's just my comment on that. But again, I know it's not verbatim. So, any other corrections, comments? And can we have a motion to approve the minutes with the corrections?
Move to approve the amended minutes.
And is there a second?
Second the motion.
And all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And opposed? And Tanner is abstaining. Okay, we have a public hearing on the setback variance of one-eight-one-one-six Deerwood Lane Northeast. And Aaron is going to introduce this.
Yep, is there a planning commissioner that has their cellphone somewhere near a microphone that feedback is sometimes as a result of that? But it also might be the laptops, I'm not sure. It's just, it just becomes super hard to understand when you're trying to listen to YouTube later on, when all you hear is a clicking going on to try and get accurate. Appreciate that attention.
Is it preferred that they're off?
I, I just think it's proximity to the recording device. I don't know what it is. I, I'm not a technology guy, so. All right. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Planning Commission. Uh, on January thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, Blake Robinson purchased one-eight-one-one-six Deerwood Lane Northeast. At the time of the sale, the septic system, which was installed in nineteen seventy-eight, failed an inspection and was declared non-compliant. I have cited two sections of code that require a compliance inspection be done at the time of purchase or sale or transfer of property, as well as who is responsible for the compliance inspection at the time of the property. Betker Excavating and Septic was hired to replace the system. Due to the age of the existing system, the conditions of the soil, and the lack of available space on the property, it was noted that a variance would be necessary to install a replacement system. On April eleventh, twenty twenty-four, the city received an application from Mr. Robinson for the variance to reduce the front yard setback from the standard of ten feet to two feet for the placement of a type-three raised-bed-pressure septic box mound and a tank within five feet of the property line. The proposed septic design calls for soil corrections, which is the removal of existing material and replacement with additional soils approximately three feet above ground contained within a landscape retaining wall, landscape block retaining wall. The proposed placement requires that the raised bed be placed two feet from the city right-of-way in the front yard setback in order to achieve the required twenty-foot setback from the residential basement or foundation wall. The proposed placement of the raised pressure bed is completely on the property and not in the city right-of-way. However, due to the proximity of the right-of-way, I made contact with the Public Works Director, and after a visual inspection of the property, it is believed that if approved, the placement would not interfere with maintenance operations or future street repair. The proposed system meets all, meets requirements for all wells, including neighboring wells. The consideration of variance requires a three-factor test for practical difficulty. The first factor is a test of reasonableness, which means that the landowner would likely use the property in a practical way, but cannot do so under the rules of our ordinance. Uh, in this case, a septic system is required for a home to be considered habitable. The approval of this variance would allow for the property to be continued to use as a residence. The second factor is a test of uniqueness. The issue for a variance is determined by the circumstances unique to the property and not caused by the landowner. The uniqueness generally relates to physical characteristics of a particular piece of property. In this case, the property has limited space for a drain field due to its irregular-shaped corner lot. It also has a branch of Anoka County Ditch Twenty-eight running through the property from the rear lot line to the front lot line, dividing the lot in half. The third factor is that a variance would not alter the essential character of the neighborhood. This factor is used to consider whether the resulting structure or improvement would be out of scale, out of place, or otherwise inconsistent with the surroundings. When applying this test to a setback reduction, the visual impact or the improved, the improvement relative to the surrounding dwelling is the emphasis of this assessment. For example, when thinking about a variance for encroachment into a setback, the focus is on how the particular building could look closer to a lot line, or if it fits within the character of the neighborhood. In this case, the property has an existing hedge that runs parallel to the front property line and the city right-of-way. This proposed raised box mound would not exceed the height of this existing hedge. City staff request that the Planning Commission hold a public hearing, review the application, and approve a variance to reduce the front yard setback standard from ten feet to two feet for the placement of a raised-pressure-bed-septic-box mound, and ten feet to five feet for a tank at one-eight-one-one-six Deerwood Lane Northeast with the following conditions. A licensed, licensed septic designer must obtain all necessary building permits to complete inspections for the install according to the septic code, and a already submitted monitoring and mitigation plan must be submitted for approval. The applicant is here if you have any questions.
Okay. Thank you. So, right now, we're gonna open what's called the public hearing, and if anyone would like to come in up first. First of all, if anybody other than the owner would like to come up. And then sometimes there's questions that might arise where the owner can answer those. And seeing no one coming up, if the owner would like to come up, please, and if, if you'd like to. You're okay? Okay, great. So we're gonna close the public hearing then. And. What, go ahead.
Oh, I'll make a motion, open for discussion.
Second the motion.
Okay, go ahead.
Uh, I, yeah, I, to me, to me, this makes sense. You know, he's got that ditch on the other side of his property, otherwise it would be reasonable to use that area. But if it's gotta be compliant in order to be habitable, to me, this meets that three-factor test pretty well. That's my two cents.
I'm curious on, um, on the septic drying, why, why does, is what he calls the deep driveway here actually the county ditch? Let me take a look here.
Yes.
It's deep drainage way.
Does it? Oh.
I thought the same thing.
Reading it sideways too kinda makes it tough, but.
Script is a lost form.
Yeah, yeah, I don't have it.
He's a, uh, he's a septic designer, he's not a author or a calligraphist or anything like that, so. There you go. I'm sure he's much more diligent with a tractor and a backhoe than he is with a pen or pencil.
And I think this meets our three-factor test pretty well.
So is, is the idea, and maybe you're the owner, correct?
Yeah.
You could maybe speak to this when, you know, there's talk of all of that soil being replaced and, you know, coming up to two feet of the, um, you know, right-of-way. Are, are the shrubs and the hedge there gonna be eliminated completely?
And would you mind coming up to the, the? Just write that, this microphone there. And if you could just state your name, please, and your address.
Blake Robinson, one-eight-one-one-six Deerwood Lane Northeast. And what was the question again?
Um, is the plan, because it's coming much closer to the, um, you know, right-of-way here, is the entire hedge gonna be eliminated, and then it's just gonna be the block retaining wall that's containing the drain, or the drain field?
I talked to the builder today, and I told him that curb appeal was a very big aspect of this, what I, what I was hearing. So asked if we could save as many of the bushes as we could, so we kinda got a plan to access it from the middle, maybe lose one or two bushes, and that's it. But he's gonna try to mitigate it and keep the most that he can, and then possibly dig out the bushes so I can replant them after it's done, so.
Okay.
In order to help answer the question, Gabe, if you look at the image that I put up there now, this white line is actually the property line.
Gotcha.
This space is the city right-of-way, and this is the row of hedges.
Okay.
So the septic is only gonna be two feet from this property line, so it's not even gonna touch or anywhere close to the hedge.
Got it.
And we were talking about planting an axus, you can see the gap right there.
Yep, yep, so he'll take those up.
It's gonna be like one or two bushes, yep, yep.
Sure.
Cause I want, I want, I don't want my bushes to go away, you know? I bought the property, I love, love how it is.
Yep, yep. You don't want your lawn ornament to be a septic system.
Exactly.
Got it.
Any other questions?
That's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming out. Do we have a motion on this? Well, I, I think we'll close the discussion then.
Yeah, we can close. I'll, I'll make a motion for approval to grant the variance for the reduction in setback in the front property line from ten feet to two feet for the installation of a septic system drain field located at prob, located at one-eight-one-one-six Deerwood Lane Northeast. Pin three-three-three-three-two-three-three-four-zero-zero-four-three.
I'll second that.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, and any more discussion? No?
Just to be clear, uh, Melphany, your motion is to recommend to the city council approval.
Correct.
Okay.
To, to grant approval, yes. Thank you.
Yes.
That's our recommendation so far. Okay, so we'll vote on that. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? So that motion carries. So, that's all good for you? Thank you for coming out tonight.
In two weeks, then the recommendation will go to the city council for final approval.
Thank you for the clarification.
Yep.
Okay, then the next, um, public hearing is gonna be about a variance to lot and setback standards at one-eight-one-six-four Highway sixty-five northeast, Lot seventeen and one-twenty-five. So Aaron, if you could, please introduce this.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair, give me one second to get things loaded here. All right, members of the Planning Commission, please bear with me, there's a lot of information coming your way.
Yeah.
I was just gonna ask if you wanted a glass of water for, for this, or if we're gonna paraphrase, or?
I can't paraphrase, cause I think all of the information is extremely important for you to have to consider. I am more than happy to go back and sort of summarize at the end and try and answer any questions that you may have in terms of land use. Um, I think that those are gonna come up in part of this conversation. So Cedarwood Estates, formerly Village Green North, is a hundred-and-fifty-plus-unit manufactured home park located in an R-two residential zoning district at the corner of Highway sixty-five and one-hundred-and-eighty-first Avenue Northeast. Continental Communities purchased the property in November of two thousand twenty-one. Documentation showing that this property was given a special permit by the Village of East Bethel Council to be a mobile park as early as September of nineteen sixty-nine. Multiple zoning code and ordinance revisions, uh, May of seventy-nine and March of eighty-seven have occurred since nineteen sixty-nine to include the requirement that manufactured home parks have conditional use permits. City staff and Continental Community staff have searched and are unable to locate any conditional use permit issuance for this property. Uh, section thirty-eight-twenty of the, uh, East Bethel Code says that no person shall construct, locate, operate, or maintain a manufactured home park in the city unless the proposed area is zoned for B-one business commercial district, as stated in the city's zoning ordinance. As a reminder, this is, this park is located in an R-two zoning district. Since one-eight-one-six-four Highway sixty-five was rezoned to an R-two residential zoning district in two thousand eight, and no conditional use permit can be located, this makes this entire property a potential non-conforming use. In addition to the non-conforming use, there are also potentially non-conforming placements as a result of the zoning standard changes. Section five, nonconformities of the East Bethel Code states that within the zoning districts established by this chapter or amendments that may be later adapted, adopted, excuse me, situations may occur where, as a result of the requirements contained in this chapter, an existing lot, structure, site improvement, or use does not conform with one or more of the requirements of the chapter. It is the intent of this section to regulate such non-conforming situations to accomplish the following. Recognizing the existence of uses and structures that were lawful when established, but which no longer meet the ordinance requirements. Discourage the enlargement, expansion, intensification, or extension of any non-conforming use or structure, and discourage any increase of the impact of the non-conforming use or structure on adjacent property. Addition, or only exceptional cases of an expansion or intensification of a non-conforming use will be permitted, and only after approval of a variance. And it also is to encourage the elimination of non-conforming uses and structures, or to reduce their impact on adjacent properties. What is a non-conforming use? Uh, our code defines a non-conforming use, uh, that a non-conforming use may, use may be continued through repair, replacement, restoration, maintenance, or improvement, but not expansion, unless the non-conforming use or occupancy is discontinued for a period of more than one year. Any non-conforming use is destroyed by fire to the extent of fifty percent of its market value. Non-conforming use may not change to another non-conforming use. And when any non-conforming use has been changed to a conforming use, it may not later be changed to a non-conforming use. A non-conforming use may be changed to lessen the non-conformity, but once lessened, the use may not be changed to increase the non-conformity. Minnesota Statute four-six-two-point-three-five-seven subdivision one E says that a legal non-conformity has the right to continue. It may continue through repair, replacement, restoration, maintenance, or improvement. These rights were limited to repair and maintenance until two thousand four, when the legislature added replacement, restoration, restoration, and improvement, but not expansion. However, the East Bethel City Code, or the East Bethel Council in nineteen eighty-seven, recognized that there would be some complications and impacts uh, when they enacted new citywide zoning standards. Therefore, section thirty-eight forty-four, uh, existing manufactured home parks, manufactured home parks in existence or for which conditional use permits have been issued as of the effective date of the ordinance from which this article is derived, may continue to operate for a period not to exceed two years from the effective date of the ordinance from which the article is derived, during which two-year period, the article shall not apply to such parks. At the termination of a said two-year period, however, all provisions contained herein shall apply to and must be met by such parks with the following exceptions. And we can talk about those exceptions that are listed there, uh, once we finish here. But, uh, other variances may be approved by the city council if strict compliance with said provisions of this article would be an undue hardship upon the owner of the park. We move into the new lot standards. Uh, section thirty-eight twenty-five, uh, of the East Bethel City Code, all lots in manufactured home parks are subject to the following regulations. A single lot size, each manuf, each lot in a manufactured home park intended as a location for a single wide unit shall not contain less than seven thousand eight hundred square feet of unoccupied space, excluding the street sidewalk right-of-way, and shall have a minimum of a width of sixty feet, except corner lots, which shall have a minimum width of seventy feet, and shall have a minimum depth of a hundred and thirty feet, measured from the curb face to the rear lot line, provided, however, that in all cases, lots shall be of significant size to meet all setback requirements of this article. Very similar language for the double-wide, however, it just, uh, extends the square footage from seven thousand eight hundred square feet to eleven thousand seven hundred square feet, from seventy-feet side yard to a ninety-foot side yard, but the hundred and thirty feet in-depth remains the same. Uh, front yard setback, the front yard setback of the manufactured home shall no be, shall, shall be no less than thirty feet from the curb face. On corner lots, the setback shall be observed on both frontages. The rear yard setback of the manufactured home shall be no less than twenty feet from the rear lot, rear lot line. The side yard setback shall be no less than fifteen feet from the lot line. A minimum distance, there shall be no less than thirty feet between manufactured homes in all directions. And the area occupied, no more than twenty-five percent of each lot may be occupied by a dwelling or structure. Historical mapping shows that the last time homes were placed on Lot seventeen and Lot twenty-five was in two thousand eight, which is prior to Continental Communities purchasing the manufactured home park. These lots remained empty until October twenty twenty-two, when Continental Communities applied for permits to place new homes on the lots. Without a conditional use permit, these non-conforming lots were lessened in conformity sometime after two thousand eight, when the previous non-conforming homes were removed. They remained vacant all the way up until two thousand twenty-two, which is more than one year. The placement of new manufactured homes with larger footprints and square footages would meet the definition of an expansion. Since these lots were vacated and exceptions were codified for existing manufactured home parks, city staff reviewed the prior ordinance, prior to March of nineteen eighty-seven, which was ordinance number one-twenty-two, for lot standards. So subdivision two from ordinance one-twenty-two is that all lots in a mobile home park are subject to the following regulations. And then it just goes on to repeat what's in our current code. The only change is they changed the word "mobile home park" to "manufactured home park." The existing lot standards stayed exactly the same from nineteen eighty-seven to today. Or from prior to eighty-seven, excuse me. Minnesota Statute, I'm on page twenty if you're following along. Minnesota Statute four-sixty-two-point-three-five-seven, under the zoning ordinance subdivision one A. This is state law. Certain zoning ordinances, a municipal, a municipality must not enact, amend, or enforce a zoning ordinance that has an effect of altering existing density, lot size requirements, or manufactured home setback requirements in any manufactured home park constructed before nineteen ninety-five, if the manufactured home park, when constructed, complied with the then-existing density, lot size, or setback requirements. Um, landowners may assert their continuance rights in response to city enforcement of a zoning ordinance. The burden is on the landowner to establish that their property qualifies for these non-conforming rights. Continental Communities, as of today, has not provided the city any documentation to establish that the manufactured home complied with existing requirements when constructed in nineteen sixty-nine, nineteen seventy-nine, or two thousand eight, when the zoning standards changed. Lot seventeen is an interior lot with a reported width of thirty feet and a length of eighty feet. The newly proposed home is sixteen feet wide by seventy-six feet deep. The placement is five foot nine inches from the curb face, twenty-one feet from the home in the rear, twenty-one feet from the home to the right, and twenty-seven feet from the home to the left. In two thousand eight, the home that was placed on Lot seventeen was an approximate fourteen by sixty-five, with the placement ten feet from the curb face, twenty-five feet from the home to the rear, twenty feet from the home to the right, and twenty-five feet from the home to the left. Lot one-twenty-five is a corner lot at the intersection of Cedarwood Road and Linden Place, with the possible dimensions of fifty by ninety. However, lot lines cannot be established. The newly proposed home is a sixteen by seventy-six, and was placed on the lot six foot five from the curb face of Cedarwood Drive. There is twenty-nine feet of distance between the new home and the home to the east. However, there's fourteen and a half feet of distance between this and the home directly to the north, or the back. Additionally, this is a corner lot, so the side yard placement off of the curb face of Linden Wood Pla, or Linden Place, excuse me, is thirty feet. In two thousand eight, the home on Lot one-twenty-five was an approximate fourteen by sixty-eight, and the placement was fifteen feet off the curb face of Cedarwood Drive, twenty-six feet off the curb face of Linden Place, and twenty-eight feet from the neighboring home to the east, and fifteen feet from the neighboring home to the north, or the rear. These placements do not meet the criteria set forth allowed for structures to be placed on lots, so variances would be required. The consideration of a variance requires the Planning Commission to consider a three-factor test for practical difficulty. The first factor is a test of reasonableness, which means that the landowner would likely use the property in a practical way that cannot do so under the rules of the ordinance. It does not mean that the land cannot be put to any reasonable use whatsoever without the variance. For example, the variance application for a building too close to a lot line that does not meet the required setbacks. The focus, the focus of the first factor is whether the request to place a building there is reasonable. In this case, the placement of a new manufactured home on a lot, on a lot in an existing manufactured home park is reasonable. Placement of a manufactured home with dimensions larger than the previous non-conforming home is not reasonable. The expansion of a non-conformity is prohibited by East Bethel Ordinance Section Five and Minnesota Statute four-sixty-two-point-three-five-seven subdivision one E. Placing a manufactured home within thirty foot of another manufactured home may not be reasonable. The second factor is that the landowners, the landowner's problem is due to circumstances unique to the property and not caused by the landowner. The uniqueness generally relates to the physical characteristics of a piece of property, that is, to the land, and not the personal characteristics or preferences of the landowner. When considering a variance for a building to encroach or intrude into a setback, the focus of this factor is whether there is anything physically unique about the piece of property, such as sloping, topography, or other natural features like wetlands. In this case, Continental Communities purchased the property in its existing form and design. Due to the lack of a conditional use permit and non-conforming, or illegal non-conforming status of this entire property, the existing lot dimensions in Cedarwood Estates cannot be expanded to accom, to accommodate placements of manufactured homes with our existing setbacks. The third factor is that the variance would not alter the essential character of the neighborhood. This factor is used to consider whether the resulting structure would be out of place, out of scale, or otherwise inconsistent with the surrounding area. For example, when thinking about a variance for a placement with a variance for an encroachment into a setback, the focus is how the particular building will look closer to a lot line, and if that- The focus is how the particular building will look closer to a lot line and if that it fits within the character of the area. In this case, there are a hundred and fifty-plus manufactured homes in the park, of which all. Would not meet section thirty-five twenty-eight lot standards today. The encroachment and setbacks vary on each lot as a result of inconsistent lot dimensions. And also in this case, a variety of manufactured home dimensions have been placed on lots throughout the history of this park. City staff is recommending the planning commission hold a public hearing and make a recommendation of approval or denial. To the city council to the variance request to reduce lot standards and setback distances to allow. The existing placement of manufactured home on lots seventeen and twenty-five to remain.
Thank you for all of that.
Well, well done.
Okay, so we're gonna open up the public hearing for this, uh, topic and. I'm seeing no one else. Would you like to come up to the microphone, please? And if you could please state your name and your address.
My name is Rusty Edmonds. Uh, my address is four zero one eight Mapleton Drive Northeast, Ham Lake. I actually live in Flamingo Terrace. I'm an area manager for Continental Communities.
Okay, thank you. And what would you like to say? Or do you have any questions for us?
Don't have a whole lot of questions. Just got a couple of things to say. Uh, I understand that, that the setbacks weren't maintained. On the drawings that I gave my set guys, it's a hired contractor, it said ten feet on the contract. When they submitted their mapping, because they did their own maps, um, it said ten feet plus or minus. That doesn't work for me. I give you a set, that's what you need to do, right? Um, I've spoken with Aaron several times on the matter. Going forward, absolutely no home will be without those restrictions, okay? So that's that part of it. As far as non-conformity, are you saying that going forward, the only homes that can go on. The existing sites are homes that were there physically as far as size goes. Because we have some sites there that had twelve-foot homes. They don't even make those anymore. So you're basically closing down.
Rusty, I'll let you, uh, talk with them about the current variance requests that are at hand and then we can have a conversation outside of that about.
Okay.
How, how moving forward would work.
So, um, basically the homes are set. They're not meeting current code. If you look down the line, either direction, the homes that were placed are in line with what else is there. And so when the set crew set the homes, even though they had my map, they tried to aesthetically match what was already existing. So. I throw myself on the mercy of the court.
Um, so right now the lots are vacant?
No, right now the.
The homes are.
The homes are there, the peers have been set, uh, they're all ready to go, waiting for final approval. We can't get occupancy until this is satisfied.
Okay.
They've been, I think they were completed six months ago, eight months ago. So looking at ways to solve this issue and this became the most advantageous, I guess, so.
Have you, um, managed other, um, parks?
Twenty-five years, all across the Midwest, Iowa, Illinois, Michigan, and now Minnesota, lucky me. I tell people all the time, I'm a warmer guy stuck in the upper Midwest. I don't know what I did wrong.
It's not so bad.
Yeah, no. And I'm close to retirement, so it'll be warm weather.
Have you dealt with things like this before?
Not really setback issues. Most of the parks that I had were fairly modern. There were a couple of, of older parks that I had that were smaller, family-owned type things, but when the builder built them way back in the day. They left plenty of room. Now, that being said, the footprint didn't have to remain the same so long as the site was used the same way. Does that make sense? So I didn't have to replace a twelve-foot home with a twelve-foot home.
Right.
So, um, and that's my concern here is that, yes, indeed, the houses that were on those sites. Were smaller, ten feet shorter, two feet narrower, right? Can we still get those ones? We can get fourteen wi- fourteen wide homes. Problem is aesthetically, they would sit on that site, I, unoccupied, vacant forever. Nobody wants that size of home anymore. Um, because you wouldn't think that two hundred square feet would be that much. It's, it's a lot of feet. So it's an extra bedroom, you know, so. Do we order them on occasion on very special circumstances where the site will not accommodate a seventy-six-foot home, you know? And so we take that into consideration. Uh, but the rule of thumb is a standard for the industry is sixteen seventy-six, double wides, twenty-eight fifty-six. Standard double wides fifteen years ago, um, was twenty feet wide. And so they've gained eight feet in width, um, and they were twenty by forty-two, um, and so you're sixteen feet longer even. And so to match the what is there currently is not possible, so.
Unless you took that special consideration to do it here, like you were saying. You said you can still get a hold of the fourteen-foot wides.
Yep, but you, the, the double wides that are twenty by, uh, forty-two, you can't even find them.
Sure.
So the smallest double wide is twenty-four now, so.
What's the.
Forty-four, sorry.
What's the state of the park? Are there a lot of homes that may need replacing in the near future or far future?
I would say that, that, uh, as a community manager and an area manager, I'm not looking to boot anybody out of their home. I'm not. If it becomes in such disrepair that it can't be, uh, rehabbed and made livable for the current occupant. We give them several notices, you know, hey, look, we've got to get on this, we've got to fix these things, um, in order to keep this place occupiable. And so my concern is for the resident as well. There are several in there that need to go away. Some of, some of them are recently vacant, uh, just got, uh, um, through sheriff sales on two of them. We're gonna run into the same issue as far as setbacks go with those two houses because they have to be removed. We had another one that, uh, since we started, we've been telling the person. House can't stay here in this condition. You have to repair this house. So unbeknownst to the community, they sold it to another party. That party sold it to another party. And then our last windstorm, the roof blew off. So now that's being removed. We're not gonna be able to replace that house with the same-sized house.
Right.
And that's a twelve-foot wide home, so. That's, I, that's where we're at. Those, those, there's several homes that are gonna be replaced. Our, our job is to make nice-looking communities for nice people. Uh, we want to create a home atmosphere and neighborhood, just like we all live in, right? And so it's in our best interest to, to clean the place up and it takes time, um, takes a lot of money. But we're not afraid to spend that money. We're not afraid to put in the necessary improvements. Um, so far we've replaced, uh, a little over a third of the roads. We've cut down eighty thousand dollars for the trees that were ash trees and that kind of thing. Maples that were allowed to grow to be a hundred and fifty years old and we're splitting down the middle. Um, you have to do those things as upkeep. Uh, we try to keep our, our homes nice. Uh, we have, I think there are twenty-three brand-new homes there now. And. According to this, we probably shouldn't have put any of those homes in. Because I know that they don't, I know that they exceed what was there before. That being said, we got approval and, and occupancy on twenty-one of them, so.
Do you know when that was?
When we put the houses in?
No, when the, when the occupancy was approved, yeah, well, yeah, I guess so.
They would, they would have all varied according to when they were finished. So I would have to go back and look at dates, um, all within the last three years, so.
So you've gotten through tw- twenty-one certificates of occupancy within the last three years?
Yes.
Okay.
So.
If the city council denied this, um, what would happen to the, the two in those lots of seventeen and one twenty-five?
They would probably go to another park.
They'd just have to move them out.
Completely torn down, um, and, and moved to another community. And at that point, I don't know that we'd bother trying to put another home on those sites. Because we wouldn't have anything that would fit either one of those sites.
Right. Do you own the homes, the, the park does?
The company owns the homes temporarily. We have what's called a lease option program. And so you can buy the home straight up. If you've got cash in the bank and you wanna buy it, perfect, I like that best. If you have your own financing, fantastic. If you are, like most people who are moving into a manufactured housing community. Don't have those kind of finances or access to that kind of, uh, loan, we offer, we have a, a. Partner, a sister company that we work well with, um, and we have a lease option program. And so there's a commitment fee. This is, I'm committed to buying this house, right? And then we establish what the house rent is and what the site rent is, we combine those, and that's what you pay for the first year. I figure out most of these numbers myself because I don't want anybody to have sticker shock when it comes to the end. Um, when we transfer you to a mortgage, I want that mortgage payment to be the same as your house payment would have been, I'm sorry. Same as your house payment would have been, so it doesn't fluctuate more than fifty, seventy-five dollars either way, right? I set it up so that you generally don't have to bring anything extra to the table. One hundred percent of every, one hundred percent of everything you pay towards that home that first year is put into a fund. That fund, uh, when we convert to the mortgage, pays your down payment, your closing costs, your title transfer, your first-year insurance, and taxes. All of that stuff is included in that and it sets up an escrow account so that going forward. Your taxes and your insurance are covered for the first five years. So it's, it's a, it's probably, and this is for a long time, it's the best program as far as lease option kind of stuff that I've ever seen. So I'm proud of, I'm proud of what we do.
Okay. Great. Anybody else have any other questions?
How, how do you guys get water, the domestic water in there? Do you have your own?
We have wells.
Multiple wells?
Um, there's only one well at Cedarwood. I don't know what the plan is going forward. There's been some discussion and I'm not that deep into the acquisitions part of it. I, I'm the fringe guy, okay? I'm the guy who gets to put my face in front of people. Apparently there's been some discussions about hooking up two water and sewer, um, city water, city sewer at some point. When that's gonna happen, I have no idea. I just know that the discussion's been in the works in the background.
I was just leaning out because of, I was wondering about fire protection. So I was wondering about fire protection, if they had any hydrants in there.
I don't believe there's a, no. I'd have to look. I don't think there's any hydrants in that park. And so they have to bring tanker trucks in, but we have, at Flamingo, we have four fire hydrants. And they still have to bring in tanker trucks because our system, our wells will not pump that stuff to keep the hoses full. And so I'm sure they'll be the same at Cedarwood, so. They're not meant for that kind of usage, unfortunately.
Well, thank you so very much. Is there anything else that you wanted to say?
Nope, I, I think that I've covered everything. Um, like I said, I'm throwing myself on the mercy of the court, so we'll see what happens, I guess.
All right, thank you.
Any more questions for me?
Not yet.
Not yet? Next time.
Well, stick around, because we're gonna have a little discussion here too. So I'm going to close the public hearing then.
Madam Chair, I realize that in my reading as, as, uh, Mr. Edmonds was talking, there was a section I probably completely missed in my.
Okay.
Presentation that may be a little bit helpful, but I, I don't know if you want me to recover that or if you guys all maybe read through that. But this is the section where it compares non-conformities and the, um. I'll just read it. Uh, in comparing existing lot proposals to the standards from the ordinance and.
What page are you on real quick?
I'm under, I'm on page twenty, the very top. I think I missed that whole first paragraph there. In comparing the existing lot proposals to the standards of the ordinance in number one twenty-two in nineteen seventy-nine shows that they did not. Nor would not meet the standards even at that time, possibly making them illegal non-conformities. Without a conditional use permit dating back to that date. Illegal non-conformities are defined as those that were not permitted when established. So they may exist because prior zoning ordinances were not enforced. Uh, a city's failure to enforce a zoning ordinance does not give the landowner the legal right to continue as a le- illegal non-conformity. Illegal non-conformities do not have the same rights associated with legal non-conformities. Um, the guidance is that municipalities should consider whether the non-conformity ever complied with the existing ordinance. Or law before assuming a particular non-conformity is entitled to statutory rights to continue. So there is a, a lot of, um, potential here with this property, whether it meets standards or doesn't meet standards. The, we're looking at some historical information here. Non-electronic, uh, I've spent hours paging through handwritten minutes of city council meetings attempting to find any information about. Village Green North or its existence prior to that, or, or whether anything was issued. Uh, during the ordinance change times or anything like that. There was conversations about, um. From a council member advising, uh, the previous owner of Village Green North that they would be grandfathered in and there was no reason for them to seek anything else and. Uh, so some of that advice may have been very poor. But needless to say, the only permit, uh, that is in any record is that special permit that was issued back in sixty-nine. For, um, the placement. And at that time, um, mobile home parks were only allowed, uh, for six months at a time as seasonal living and then they had to be removed. So he was, the original applicant was given permission to have a park under the seasonal establishment. So there's been a ton of research, um, whether this is a illegal non-conformity or a non-conforming situation. It's gonna take a lot more research and a legal opinion to make that determination. But we do know that it doesn't meet today's standards, uh, and as I stated earlier in, in my staff report, that. It is not the city's obligation to prove that they met the standard. It is the owner's obligation. To bring proof that they met the standard at the time, so. It's a difficult one. I, I, I have feelings in, in many ways. I'm glad I'm not making the decision that. You guys and the council will eventually have to make.
Ma'am, can I make a motion to open discussion? We're pretty much there, but I will, I will make a.
Second motion.
Thank you.
Okay, and Brian seconded? All right, okay, so have at it.
I am curious about the whole CUP situation. Um, it was back in, was it seventy-nine that they made the requirement? And no applicant came forward to apply for a CUP?
There was not.
And that still remains today, so even after transfer of ownership between however many, it's.
There's still no application for a conditional use permit.
Is that something that is typically told to? Like, that seems like something that should be disclosed within the sale and purchase of a property. That you're required to have a CUP, so is this.
That's a civil agreement between two private parties. The city wouldn't get involved in any of that.
Yeah, it could be between, yeah, the, the contracts, real estate, et cetera.
Sure. Um, at what point, uh, was, was, um. Continental Communities informed that they needed a CUP or have they been?
Yes, um, this conversation started. Rusty, when did the expansion proposal come into play? Twenty twenty-two? It was before I was appointed to the community development director position, so. Those who were in my position prior to me most likely just ignored. The zoning stipulations in here because of what you, uh, were exposed to tonight and how difficult of a, a conformity situation. This, this potentially could be. Now, prior to Continental Communities, it was owned by the same owner prior to that. Through all these changes, Village Green North.
Okay.
So maybe under their operation, they were.
It was, it was a owner that started the project and then sold it in, I believe it was seventy-two or seventy-three. To the family that owned it until we, until that happened.
So all of those zoning changes, it was under the same ownership essentially, so they had no reason to have to. Comply, if you will, if, if, uh, the city was just. Ignoring the zoning code and allowing things to continue and that is my assumption is that when I arrived in the office. As a black and white letter of the law person. This has potential issues that should be addressed and should not be ignored.
Right.
To, to rectify a situation.
Yeah, I agree completely that it does have to be addressed. Because it just seems like these certificates of occupancy have been granted over and over and over again, right? because it just seems like these certificates of occupancy have been granted over and over and over again, right? So-
But leaning on that though too, going back to that last paragraph here and it just read, just because it had been, doesn't mean that it-
Yeah, completely understood.
It should.
Is there anything relevant in the page eighteen, section thirty-eight to forty-four? Were there exceptions that you-
Yeah, the, so the exceptions listed out in there have to do with street width, sidewalk width, amount of park space. So they're not expecting an existing park to come in that only had a twenty-foot wide street and the new zoning code says the street has to be thirty-three feet wide and you have two years to dig up all the streets and make them thirty-three feet wide. So those were the exceptions was sort of those major structural things that would be relatively expensive to rectify in a short two-year window.
But it doesn't address setbacks?
Yes, I think it does address setbacks for the existing homes. So that way they weren't required to pick up those homes and then push them back to meet the standards. But anything moving forward should have then met the standards.
So the legal non-conforming standardization of it.
Which makes it difficult without a conditional use permit because if a conditional use permit had been issued back in nineteen sixty-nine, nineteen seventy-nine or nineteen eighty-seven, we might not be having a conversation tonight. Because those would have all been defined in a conditional use permit, what the parameters would, the ownership would be allowed to do.
What was it that allowed a number of these to be built, including these, before we got to this point of reviewing?
That's my question.
I think you said it earlier.
My only assumption is that the city staff in the decision-making position just ignored the zoning code to allow for replacement of manufactured homes is my only logical conclusion instead of enforcing the code.
When were the ones set that are currently there on these two spots? When were they just, were they just recently built and set there?
Twenty twenty-two.
Twenty twenty-two.
Late twenty twenty-two.
You probably said that.
Over a year ago.
So hypothetically, if, if there was a CUP in place, there are provisions to allow them to, the forwards were, I think, repair, restore. I don't have them right in front of me.
So expansion is the word you're looking for. There would be an exception to expansion.
Okay, but everything else like the maintain, repair-
Would all be allowable-
Right.
Under a conditional use because we would, we would set the conditions of said permit.
Right, so even, even-
Although the condition in a conditional use permit may not say placing a seventy-six foot trailer on an eighty-foot lot is an acceptable standard. It may say ten-foot side yard setback or a ten-foot rear yard setback or twenty-five feet between two different homes. Or it, it wouldn't be, you'd have to create a standard.
Can I ask a quick question?
It's up to the, that's up to the chair.
Sure, if you could just come up to the microphone, please. Just so that we can get it into the minutes. Thanks.
Earlier you said that it's zoned improperly. It's now R two, is that correct?
Not that it's zoned improperly, that's the current zone. However, our ordinance, the revision to the ordinance states that manufactured home parks cannot be placed in any zone other than a B three, I think is what I-
And East Bethel is also zoned R two?
Correct.
If by changing the zoning from R two to what it says in your records is what it should be, what would that change as far as our setbacks and all of this?
Nothing. The lot standards would remain the same regardless of what zoning district it was in.
I was curious as to-
Would that just mean that he wouldn't be required to have a conditional use permit because it's zoned for that?
Potentially.
Okay, all right.
Again, this one is, as I, as I've explained this one to the council in work sessions and to our new city administrator, this one is quite the onion. You pull off one layer and now you've exposed another layer and you pull that layer off and now you've exposed another layer and until you get to the core of the problem-
You're crying all the way.
You may not solve, you may not solve the problem. Unfortunately, as the park sits right now, the amount of land that's there for the number of homes that's on the land and the size of the homes, it will never meet standards. It just can't. There's just not enough area there. If a lot has to be a hundred and thirty feet deep, some of these islands, if you will call them islands, where the, between the streets are never gonna meet a hundred and thirty feet. You'd end up losing half of the park if you tried to meet the standards. That's not to say that not every other home couldn't come out of there and then double wides replace every other home. Like you might be able to meet standards then, but that is, that's an expense.
Choice of you as a property owner, not, and it's not for us to decide.
Correct.
And that's not what the variance is here for us tonight as.
I'm still not clear on how this, if these were made in twenty twenty-two, how did it come upon us now?
Because Aaron wasn't here.
No, well-
But there was nothing to approve.
Okay, so I, I tried to leave that part out of this conversation because this is really about the variance request for Lot seventeen and the variance request for Lot twenty-five. Simultaneously to this conversation, continental communities' ownership, out-of-state ownership also submitted a sketch plan for an expansion to the north of the park. So it took us some time to do the research and then work through the city attorney on the non-conforming aspect of things to make a determination on the expansion portion. Well, in the same conversation, by putting a larger home on a lot where there was a smaller home meets the definition of expansion. So after a number of conversations and then a work meeting, a conversation and the change of city administrator and the change of a community development director and as you can see, we've extended things out to where we are today. The conversation with the city council was that they weren't necessarily interested in the expansion of the park, but that the council's flavor was more to help the park create a cleaner community by individual replacements in the existing park. However, that doesn't mean that they cannot come in in a month with an expansion plan for a different community that's not this one on the same territ- Like, there's a lot of what-ifs in this entire scenario. Again, the onion layers are many, many, many.
But we're only dealing with these two things today.
What's in front of you is the variance request for these two individual lots. So don't get lost in the, in the bigger picture of why it took so long. We are where we are today because they want to improve these two lots.
If, if we recommend that this be approved and the city council does approve this variance, does that lay a precedent then so any other ones that come up would have to be-
They will be in front of you for a variance request. I guarantee every time, as long as I'm in that office.
Yes.
Unless they take the existing home on a lot that was there, that wasn't removed more than a year ago and they remove that one and they put one back exactly the same size in the exact same place-
Same footprint.
That, that's an even exchange. I will not enforce zoning code on that one if they're replacing an existing non-conformity with the exact same non-conformity. Just, we've, we've actually approved at least one of those recently because the footprint was identical to what was coming off the lot.
What if the square, just humor me on this one, square footage being the same, but the length and width are slightly different?
Then you're changing setback distances. Which is a huge consideration.
I, I was thinking, because some of those lots can be wider and you're going from the four, let's just say from a fourteen foot to a sixteen foot. And if it still meets the setback between the neighboring property, that's not affected.
They don't. I don't, I don't think anyone do.
Yeah, I know. I, I was throwing out the hypothetical.
A serious consideration of mine for, for your information was how fast and how quickly and how short of a distance can a fire leap from one to the other? Now, there's a standard set in here that there should be thirty feet between each manufactured home. I realize that that's not a possibility. But if you take a look at the drawing that I did last week with a, with a walking wheel to do the measurements, this is Lot seventeen. There's only nine foot four between this one and the corner of the house behind it.
And if we only knew someone in the fire community that would know the importance of the distance between it, that could inform us on such things.
I don't know if I can speak to your experience, but it is a concern that I have. And, you know, the, the three-factor variance test, I mean, this, this is not passing by any stretch, well, by, from what I'm gathering. So because it's not passing the three factor, I don't see how we can recommend approval of this to the city council.
Here's, this is the corner lot, Lot one twenty-five. Although that's not lot, maybe it's one twenty-six isn't in consideration, but that home is only ten feet from this one. So that, so as I, as I stated in my staff report, I think there's non-conformities everywhere and I don't know how we solve that. I mean, I do know how we solve that, but that's a very expensive proposition.
So where does the initiative come to get a CUP for this? Does that come from the city or does it come from that?
That is the property owner's responsibility.
So we could do something like approve these as they are, but say, we're not approving anymore unless there's a conditional use permit moving forward from today.
I think that's been occurring for the last six years.
I, uh, sure, we'll do it.
Yeah, yeah.
At least continental would know that they can't bring in any more units without one.
But they can. They can bring in more units as long as they are equal to what's there.
But I'm saying if they're bigger and-
They couldn't do the expansion.
They couldn't do any expansions.
My, um, my professional interpretation is a three hundred dollar variance for the lots that you want to correct are a lot cheaper than what it's gonna cost to get a conditional use permit passed and surveying the entire property, getting every current placement placed on a survey, getting every sidewalk width, every lot width, every, we're gonna require a survey. Because from here forward, even with a conditional use permit, we need to know what's on the property right now. And that's not someone's hand drawing like mine. This is gonna be done by a certified survey professional company.
Wasn't it stated that some lot markers are missing?
Uh, so I went out there to do some measurements, but I don't know where the middle of the lot lines are. I can guess, yeah.
Yeah, we need to use proximity.
So that, that, so those, what used to be a fence probably isn't a lot line, but I, I don't know that. I'm not a professional surveyor. What I know is that when you look down the row and everything is staggered this way, this way, this way, this way, this way, I don't know how you define what a lot line is. Because one got placed that was much larger and it's deeper in, but then the next one isn't. Like, I, I, we, we wanna see that on paper, like we don't wanna-
I'd like to see the improvement. I mean, having new units in there is good for the community and the people and the residents, et cetera. I like to see it. I'd like to support it. I do think there's some issues with the city of the way they've handled it the last frankly thirty years, you know? And, and approving the other ones up to this point. But if, if we could-
To continue to keep, sorry to interrupt you.
Yeah, to continue. And I, just for other people's knowledge, I know that even if you have a temporary campground, you gotta have ten feet between campers. That's like this, that's like the fire marshal thing I put, I hope put on an event. Even they measure the slide outs, every camper, where people sleep has to be ten feet apart. So I think that's kind of a golden rule that they use. And I guess moving forward, I'd sure like to see ten feet between the units that are there. I don't know if they're gonna make it unexisting, but moving forward, maybe they could.
So, so you may be able to achieve a ten-foot distance on the backside, but now you're two feet off the curb on the front side because you had to achieve the back standard when you can't achieve the front standard. Or the side standard gets achieved, but then on the other side it doesn't. Like, there, there's no easy answer to this one. There is no easy answer.
So let's, if we could bring it back to, to these two lots and the variants that we're talking about.
I, I have a concern about the infrastructure that's in place to support those homes. The variant, what I'm concerned with when you bring in bigger homes is you're bringing in more people. If the well doesn't have a lot of water, if it's not something that's sustainable and they have never done a conditional use permit, so we can examine what's in there. You think about the quality of living for the people that are renting those homes. Homes can look pretty, but is the water good? I mean, are they drinking good water? If there is a fire, how do we solve that issue? The sewer inseptics, if we're just putting in homes and they're giving occupancy certificates, is anybody inspecting the sewer that's going in, into there? I mean, that's a large area of land that's going there. So that's my concern with approving a variance is I don't think that we have current information on this, you know, as far as the safety. They're clearly over the size. And I think if we were to approve a variance at this point or recommend approval of a variance, we'd be setting a standard that we'd have a hard time getting out of later. So I, I think that there's more information even that's needed. I mean, our, from our build, our code department, you know, what is the status of, of the well? What is the status of the sewers? I mean, that makes a big difference. We look at that every time we look at a building permit for a house or a cabin and we, and all of this information, none of that is here. So to, for me, I, I, I don't even think I could make a decision to even consider approval of a variance when we don't have enough information to ensure that the people moving into the home are safe, have good water and sewer.
So you're looking at the, the future potential variances, not just these two, right?
Right, because like, like I said, historically, being that we have no background from the previous approvals for occupancy, if this group recommends approval of a variance, I think we're setting a standard of how do we say no going forward. And I think this is a good place. I am really concerned. I don't want to see anybody move out of anywhere. That area has served a community in East Bethel for a long time. We'd like to see it successful. So to make it successful, I think we need to back up and say, what's the condition here? What can we do? Get our building team to get in there and start doing some measurements and saying, where can we go? Because then a property owner or a manager can start saying, okay, you know what? Maybe these twelve or fifteen places that gotta go, maybe they go. We rearrange our park, we meet setback standards and we make a really nice area for people going forward. Then they can get a conditional use permit. That's just kinda what I'm thinking.
City staff would not inspect their sewage plant? That would be a requirement of the MPCA. We would also not inspect their well. They would have to bring us a well log or a well certification from the Minnesota Department of Health if those are what you're-
The Department of Health requires trailer parks to have somebody with a D water license. I'm sure their well is being checked by the Department of Health.
Right.
So I know I'm not worried about their wa, and you shouldn't be. Their water's gonna be fine.
Right, if, if they have that information that says all of that stuff is good, you know, then it's still just setting a standard moving forward.
So the, the, similar but different. I, I, I agree with your statement. This is gonna set a standard precedent, whatever way you wanna split it. And I know I'm a broken record with that one. I try to be careful with what we, with what we do create there. I don't wanna continue similar behavior just because it's happened in the past, doesn't mean that it's okay moving forward. Another thing that I, I know I've seen in this body and I, it's a testament to the fact that everybody cares and part of why, why we're here. But on the flip side, it is not always the job of this body to come up with the alternative solutions for whether it be property owners, whether it be for, from a business aspect or a personal aspect. And, you know, and I agree, I think it's a great idea for somebody to come in, do that. I also don't feel that's also on the city either. I think as a property owner, they, again, it's part of that piece of it here and especially as a business, not just, hey, I'm gonna move and put my home here, I'm gonna run, run and operate a business here. I always feel that's the responsibility of the business owner to make their properties, you know, a, a success in whatever manners they can and to whatever rules they need to go by. And obviously if it, you know, kicks up a rock here and we gotta pivot, we can definitely pivot. But I think that's gonna require them coming to us with whatever that plan is based on whatever guidelines that we currently have or, but, you know, they need to ask for a change. have or, but, you know, they need to ask for a change and if it's within the ability to, and it might be a long process, it might be an expensive process, that, that, that's, that's up to the business owner and the property owner. It's not up to this body. So again, you know, coming back to the fact of just that these are variances in front of us, I, yeah, I can't, I can't support it because again, it is, by definition, it is an expansion. Expansion does, is not, not only from the city code, but from the state, not to be expanded. Non-conformities also are meant to ultimately be phased out, uh, in time. I don't think that actually does happen, but I think that's the intent and the spirit of it. And again, continuing to, to be empathetic to property owners, I think we just, as much as we wanna try to let everybody do what they can and, and to try to make it work and hope for the best, unfortunately, we, we have to draw lines in some of these places and it's not always easy. Fortunately, in this situation, from the emotional aspect, there's not people in these units that were asking to leave. Testament to the property manager who was here, these units, although it's gonna be expensive, you know, a cost to it, they're gonna tear them down, but, or to take them down, they're able to reuse them. It's not, you know, it's not like they're gonna be demoed and gone and it's a waste of something, but, you know, again, that's, that, that's part of the risk of running a business, you know? Anybody who's ever, ever done that knows that that, that's part of it, whether it's a lemonade stand, trailer park, or, or, you know, a service business, right? You, you're gonna have waste, you're gonna have, make choices. Sometimes it's the right one, sometimes it's not. But ultimately in the end, as far as the variances go on these two, yeah, I, I would not be in favor of, of it just based on, purely on the fact of the expansion piece of it. As far as the park as a whole, I think there are bigger issues here and that they'll need to be dealt with, and I think they're gonna continue to be, and we'll cross those bridges when those things come before us, but it's also, I, it's also not our position to tell them what they should or shouldn't be doing, although it's, you know, I'm sure it's appreciated when we give suggestions, but at the end of the day, it's their business, it's their model. However, they wanna operate that, whether it be errands coming of, you know, again, although expensive and you wanna take out one every other, a- again, that's also, that'd be, that'd be their choice. So, uh, that's my two cents on it for what it's worth.
I'm hearing a lot of people, um, regretfully, um, not supporting this variance. Is there anybody who wants to argue for it? I'm seeing no nodding heads here.
I do, I, I want it, but I just think right now we just don't have enough information to pass it, is my feeling on it. I, I, I don't like to see, I mean, I, I, I mean, just living, driving past it, they're clearly making improvements to the community. I mean, they're, they're headed in the right direction. They're not letting it go downhill. And so I hate that I'm, now I'm telling them, stop, you know? That's disappointing to me.
It's a, a necessary part of the community for people who need housing like this, I would say. Um, it seems to be a situation like, you know, when you buy a house and you find a flaw in the title and you go, oh, four letter word at some point, right? And you don't know the way out of it. And I think we're there right now with this, so.
So can I, can I clarify one more point? Say, for instance, this was, again, old home taken off, new home, exact same size put back on, there would be no need for any sort of variance. It would be, it would fall within, um, you know, the repair, replacement, restoration, maintenance and improvement.
That's my interpretation.
If there had been a structure still there, but the fact that there wasn't for a period of time makes a difference in these scenarios.
For more than a year, right?
And we have permitted the square footage, footprint for footprint replacement at least once that, in, in my time in this position. Because it was a equal match exchange.
And foundation being different than footprint of resident. Because the, the blockwork that these, I, as an insurance agent, I, I've insured some of these things, so, uh, the, the foundation that goes underneath them can be smaller than said structure. So coming, coming in and placing in blockwork that the frame, frame of the structure can sit on, doesn't have to be all seventy-six feet.
Right.
So if somebody came in and said, yep, well, we have, well, here's our foundation, they take out the old one and they're gonna use that same foundation, they think, oh, our footprint's the same and it's not because the foundation, or because the building, the structure itself is greater. And there comes in the expansion.
The other consideration is if there's a larger one on a lot and they find a smaller one.
Now they can't go back up.
I would more, be more than happy to allow them to lessen the non-conformity.
Yep, yep, yep.
By replacing, but you're not gonna, but you're not gonna remove that one and then put a seventy-six footer back on there after you've lessened the non-conformity. So, I mean, there are, again, this one's an onion.
Yeah.
I have one comment to make is, what kinda surprises me is that, um, nobody checked this out with the city before they were put on there because these, in two thousand and twenty-two, the zoning is the same as it is today. If I wanna add a ramp on my house for a wheelchair, I have to get a permit. So if you've been the property manager, you know, and, um, you've been the property manager of that organization and you knew that you were gonna be placing a different size home, which is gonna change the setbacks, I'm kinda curious why it wasn't brought to the city before they were placed in the lot.
There were permits for every home. Every home was vetted, submitted, every home.
So the permits were.
So, so an individual employee cannot change an ordinance if they ignore a violation and approve something anyway. So just simple ignoring of an ordinance and approving a permit doesn't change the ordinance, doesn't make it a conformity either. It's still a non-conformity.
But we weren't told it was a conformity at that point. We were, we asked for the permit, we received the permit.
I'm just speaking of, of everything that's come after I've moved into the office.
And, and I'm just asking so that I understand that. I mean, I wanna hear what, what, you know, your.
No, we've submitted everything for every home, um, right to every inspection, gas lines, uh, foundation, we have to have peers, a certain number of peers a certain distance apart, a certain depth, a certain diameter, um, for every home. It's different for different types of homes. The lights get this, signal lights get this, manufacturer A gets this, manufacturer B gets this. It's all prescribed by, um, HUD and the holders. Um, and so in conjunction with all of those, we submit, this is what we're gonna do. Um, we asked for the rent for the home.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna stop you there. Just, just first of one, we're, we're, public hearing is closed. We understand per- permits have, have been applied for. I'm just, I'm just gonna, kinda, just running back to the documentation though in here, even by state statute though, even when it's illegal and non-conformed, we still can't, and especially now that we know, ignorance is one thing, uh, you know, blissfully ignoring it from a staff level, if, if that's what it was, uh, either way before us today, it was, we now know the lights on it. And one, we need to be compliant with law to a certain extent, and we have to be careful how far we push it. So, and I will say this just because it's been through enough planning and zoning meetings, uh, to keep it within the scope of the request tonight, which is the variance on these two, uh, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go ahead and call the, call, call it, improper rules, Robert's Rules of War, but I'm gonna call the question, just, I'm gonna motion for denial of, or motion to recommend denial of the variance.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, and, um, is there any other discussion that is necessary at this point?
I, I do wanna say I agree with you about the improvement. I, I want to see that too, especially in these non-conforming neighborhoods, but to, they're, they've even made provisions to do that the right way without expansion, you know, and I know it's maybe harder to get a hold of those specific size manufactured homes, but it sounds like it's possible. And that, you know, I'm looking at the square footage, I mean, you can find two-bedroom apartments that are, you know, the same square footage as the old footprints that were on these properties. And so I think it is reasonable to request, if there is gonna be something put there, it's the same size as what it was, and that's, that's as far as I'd go. Just seeing that ten foot, you know, not even ten feet from the neighboring property, and I know it's not gonna shorter it, shorten it significantly, but how, you know, how far do we continue to want to go with that? So.
Okay, you've called the question. And we're gonna take a vote on this. So all in favor of the motion to deny recommend, or to recommend denial of the variance of, on those two lots, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed to recommending denial? Okay, are there, there are none? And so that motion passes, that we will recommend denial of these variances. And, um.
Yeah, just aside comment, I, I wish, I wish them the best of luck with, with whatever they come up with. I, I really do. I, I hope they get creative and.
I'm not speaking for everybody, for me, um, this is difficult.
Makes it impossible to move forward, so.
Yeah. Well, hopefully the city council can, can work something out and deal with the, okay, sir. Okay, bye-bye.
Thank you. Good luck.
Go to the council, two weeks?
This is denial, this is denial.
No, no, it's just a recommendation.
Council has a final say.
Cause if this stands, there's just no reason for me to be there. Um, I would recommend to my company that we just look at the place, go downhill and, and wait till houses fall down and go from there. You know, it doesn't make any sense to pull a house off.
But no worries. A lot of times they don't take our recommendations, um, and sometimes they do. So, um, yeah.
Nope. Just our findings with the public hearing.
Not a problem. Thanks guys.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
All right.
Okay, what else do we have on the agenda? We have an update from Councilman Smith. Thank you for coming tonight and sitting through all of our discussion again. I hope you get paid by the minute.
Good evening, Commissioners. Jim Smith, East Bethel City Council. Normally, I'm here after we had our council meeting, but it's different this time, so I'm just gonna give you a little info on the thirteenth of May, what, what happened there. We had the, uh, Anoka County Assessor out and he did a presentation for us because our guy is gonna retire at the end of this year, Ken Tulson. So he proposed, he gave us a proposal and, uh, he wants to go three years and I think we were kinda talking like maybe try it for a year before we commit to three to see how it works out. He seems like a decent guy, this Alex Guttenberger, but we don't know until we try him. So we'll decide on that one also. Twenty twenty-four, Ken's cost is sixty-two thousand five hundred, according to our, uh, budget. Twenty twenty-five would be sixty-three thousand three eighty-five, which is an increase of eight hundred and eighty-five dollars. So Booster Days, Route sixty-five, they want a temporary liquor license, we approved that. Application for a gambling permit for Bingo, Chops Inc. is the business name, we approved that. And then, uh, we approved the variance on, uh, Durant Street with conditions, if there's any debris on the road, the city has the right to go back and then they're gonna have to put an apron or something in there. And I believe in the next, uh, in our work meeting that we're gonna discuss that because seventy-five feet seems a little too much. So we're gonna try to get that fixed as well. So that's all I got.
So seventy-five is what he has to put in?
That's what it is right now.
No, but he doesn't have to. They, they approve the variance that he doesn't have.
If it becomes a incident.
So.
Yeah, so we'll have to figure out what that measurement will be once we decide on that.
So would it just be another complaint coming in to the city that warrants another?
Probably, I would guess. But like where I live, I don't have an apron either. I've been there ten years. My driveway's gravel. I don't ever see anything on the tar there either. So I mean, it can happen, but who knows? But I mean, at least the city has the right to enforce an apron if something becomes an issue.
But wasn't, um, um, did they talk about taking a look at the ordinance maybe? Is that a short distance?
It'll come back to you.
Yeah?
Yeah.
It's on the work meeting, it's on the work meeting tomorrow night and then the conversation from there will come back in form of an ordinance revision for you to hold a public hearing, make a recommendation, which will then go back to the council for final adoption in July.
Yeah, I had, yeah, I had asked, I had sent an email to all of the council members because of our discussion.
Yep.
And then, um, also Glenn had mentioned one of the variances, or one of the ordinances or area of ordinances that he maybe like seen, looked at was, um, septic.
I don't remember.
Yeah. Well, I had asked at the end of the meeting, was there anything that seems to keep coming up, um, time and time again? I don't think it really went very far. And I did, it was not very specific or anything, but again, if anybody sees any variance or ordinances that they think needs revision, then we would send it over to the city council and hear.
Cause my opinion is, is I have an ordinance book that's this thick. What I've read in there so far is far-fetched. It's like, man, it's ridiculous. I understand we gotta have ordinances, but when I start reading stuff in there and the ordinance has come from Florida, I don't understand why we're adopting them, but that's my opinion. But we'll fix the mess.
Well, that's great. Thank you very much. Okay. Any other business? Is there a motion to adjourn?
Some move.
Okay. Mr. Mover tonight and second year. Okay, um, all in fit flavor of the motion to adjourn, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That passes. The meeting is done.